Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Griffin.
Here.
Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Casey, Moore, McCormack, Mooney, Polensic, Santana, Slyth, Spencer, Starr. You have a call, Mr. President.
Thank you. Would everyone rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all. Madam Clerk, please dispense with the journal.
By Councilmember Santana, that the reading of the minutes of the last meeting be dispensed with the journal approved, seconded by Councilmember Starr.
Thank you. Are there any communications?
File number 737-2022 from Nicole Boyer Knight, Senior Project Manager, The Community Builders, Notice of Intent to Apply to Ohio Housing Finance Agency for multifamily funding programs for the development known as West 25th Street Development at 3372 West 25th Street. File number 749-2022, Oath of Office for Dornette A. Drummond, Chief of Police, Division of Police, Department of Public Safety. File number 750-2022, Oath of Office for Tessa Jackson, Director of Department of Economic Development, City of Cleveland. File number 751-2022, Oath of Office for Sarah O'Keefe, Director of Office of Sustainability. File number 752-2022, Oath of Office for Dennis Kramer, Interim Director of Department of Port Control. File number 753-2022, Oath of Office for David Margolis, Director of Department of Public Health. File number 817-2022, from Law Director Mark Griffin, Memorandum to the Cleveland Police Monitoring Team regarding substantial progress by Cleveland Division of Police and Department of Justice's best practices.
Thank you. Are there any condolence resolutions?
Oh, wait, would you? I'm sorry, I forgot.
Oh, one more?
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, File Number 738-2022, Regarding a Transfer of License Application at 2090 West 25th Street, Ward 3. File Number 739-2022, Regarding a New License Application at 1810 West 25th Street, Ward 3. File Number 740-2022, Regarding a New License Application at 1300 East 9th Street, Ward 3. File Number 741-2022, Regarding a Transfer of Ownership Application at 8012 St. Clair, Ward 9. File Number 742-2022, Regarding a Transfer of License Application at 4317 State Road, Ward 13. File Number 743-2022, Regarding a New License Application at 1300 East 9th Street, Ward 3. File Number 744-2022, New License Application at 4075 Rocky River Drive, Ward 17. File Number 745-2022, Regarding an Economic Development Transfer Application at 1301 East 9th Street, Ward 3. File Number 746-2022, Regarding a Transfer of License Application at 2309 St. Clair Avenue, Ward 7. File Number 747-2022, Regarding a New License Application at 777 St. Clair Avenue, Ward 3. File Number 748-2022, Regarding a New License Application at 7403 Dennison Avenue, Ward 14.
That it, Madam Clerk?
That's it.
Okay. Condolence resolutions?
Resolutions of condolence by Councilmembers Bishop and Moore for Ronald T. Bainline; by Councilmember Griffin for Sarah Dean Presley; by Councilmember Griffin for Jeffrey Tyrone Jones, Sr.; by Councilmember Griffin for Kevin O. Lowry, Jr.; by Councilmember Jones for Richard Wardell Allen; by Councilmember Jones for Gloria Thompson; by Councilmembers McCormack, Spencer, and Slyth for Reverend Robert T. Begin; by Councilmember Hairston for Michelle Reese; by Councilmember Hairston for Torian Chapman; by Councilmember Hairston for Charles Moore; by Councilmember Hairston for Francis L. Si; by Councilmember Hairston for Superintendent Archie J. Reddicks, Sr.
Are there any other condolence resolutions? Madam Clerk, would you please hold out a number for Jerry Haynes? Jerry Haynes, J.E.R.R.Y.H.A.Y.N.E.S. Councilman Polensic.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Clerk, please hold out a number for Michael Rogers, former member of CPD, retired, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Casey?
Mr. Chairman, can you please add me to Robert Begin's condolence?
Okay. Councilman Mooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hold out a number for Elliot Mapson, E.L.L.I.E.M.A.P., that's what I'm
Oh, no, Mr. Mapson died. Okay, are there any other condolences? Seeing no other condolences, will everyone please rise for a moment of silence, all councilmembers? Thank you. Are there any congratulatory resolutions?
Resolutions of congratulations by Councilmember Conwell for Martin Luther King Jr. Library Branch; by Councilmember Griffin for Kyrie Tyler, Red Hands Band; by Councilmember Griffin for Faith Community United Credit Union on their 70th anniversary; by Councilmember House for Positive Education Program, Eastwood Open House; by Councilmember House for Reverend Robert Marva, OFM CAP; by Councilmember House for Reverend William Maddox, Jr.; by Councilmember Jones for Bishop Eugene W. Ward, Jr.; by Councilmember Casey for Rockport Library Branch; by Councilmember Casey for Bradley Whitecar; by Councilmember Casey for Devlin Sheehan; by Councilmember Casey for Dylan Bastian; by Councilmember Mooney for Samuel Ali Alhawaz; by Councilmember Polensic for Bernice Taros; by Councilmembers Santana, Spencer, Casey, Mooney, and McCormick for Gene Pollster; by Councilmember Slyth for Caleb Elliott Moore; by Councilmember Griffin for Michael O'Malley. Resolutions of recognition by Councilmember Gray for Close the Gap; by Councilmember Griffin for the 173rd Communication of the Most Worshipful Prince Hall Grand Lodge Free and Accepted Masons, State of Ohio, and the 134th Communication of Amaranth Grand Chapter, Order of the Eastern Star Prince Hall Affiliated, State of Ohio; by Councilmember Polensic for Jeanette Sorrell; by Councilmember Polensic for Early Settlers Association of the Western Reserve. Resolutions of appreciation by Councilmember Griffin for John Parker, Founder of Good News Concert, Red Hands Family Reunion; by Council... Resolutions of commemoration by Councilmember Jones for Sean Hudson.
Thank you. First reading, emergency ordinances referred for administrative review and committee review.
Ordinance 756-2022 by Councilmembers Santana, Slyth, House, and McCormack, to supplement the codified ordinances of Cleveland, Ohio by enacting new Section 17167 related to paid safe leave. Ordinance 759-2022 by Councilmembers Bishop and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the purchase by one or more standard and requirement contracts for the purchase, lease, or lease with option to purchase of various on-road vehicles, apparatus, and off-road equipment, cabs, bodies, and accessories, equipment, and other aftermarket items necessary to equip the vehicles authorized for their intended purposes, including vehicle rehabilitation, training, and inspections as needed for the Departments of Public Utilities and Port Control. Ordinance 760-2022 by Councilmembers McCormack and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Port Control to exercise a second option to renew a lease agreement with MRK Aviation to conduct air cargo operations for other support services for various tenants of Cleveland Hopkins International Airport. Ordinance 761-2022 by Councilmembers Bishop and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the purchase by one or more standard requirement contracts for the purchase, lease, or lease with option to purchase of various on-road vehicles, apparatus, and off-road equipment, cabs, bodies, and accessories, equipment, and other aftermarket items necessary to equip the vehicles authorized for their intended purposes, including vehicle rehabilitation, training, and inspections as needed for the various divisions of city government. Ordinance 762-2022 by Councilmembers Hairston and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Economic Development to enter into a grant agreement with Greater Cleveland Media Development Corporation, DBA Greater Cleveland Film Commission, or its designee, to assist with the general operating expense of the organization. Ordinance 766-2022 by Councilmember Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Human Resources to enter into one or more contracts in order to provide professional services necessary to administer and provide group medical, dental, prescription, vision, and life insurance coverage, the medical reimbursement accounts, dependent care accounts, and premium pass-through benefits and stop-loss coverage under IRS Section 125 for the City of Cleveland employees for a period up to one year, with three one-year options to renew exercisable by the Director of Human Resources. Ordinance 764-2022 by Councilmembers Santana and Conwell, authorizing the Director of Finance to enter into an agreement with Julia de Burgos Cultural Arts Center to provide arts and culture programs for youth and adults. Ordinance 765-2022 by Councilmembers Polensic and Griffin by departmental request, to authorize the Director of Public Safety to enter into contracts or amendments to a contract with ACIPeter Radar Corporation to permit ACIPeter to sell access to radar data derived from the city's radar system to third parties in exchange for certain maintenance and upgrade services from ACIPeter at no charge to the city, and to amend Section 5 of Ordinance Ordinance 766-2022 by Councilmembers Bishop and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Public Works to enter into one or more agreements with the State of Ohio Department of Transportation to provide services necessary for snow and ice removal and general routine maintenance and repair of a portion of State Route 176 for a period of one year, with two one-year options to renew exercisable by the Director of Public Works. Ordinance 767-2022 by Councilmember Gray, Designating Second Tabernacle Missionary Baptist Church as a Cleveland Landmark. Ordinance 768-2022 by Councilmembers Jones, Mooney, Moore, Casey, and Griffin by departmental request, determining the method of making the public improvement of constructing the Lee Road, Bel Air Road, Kelly Drive, Marcy Drive, and Brookside Boulevard area sewer projects, including but not limited to manholes and catch basins, authorizing the Director of Public Utilities to enter into one or more public improvement contracts to construct the improvement, and authorizing the Director to employ one or more professional consultants necessary to design and implement the improvement, and to apply for and accept funding. Ordinance 769-2022 by Councilmember Griffin by departmental request, authorizing Director of Human Resources to employ one or more professional consultants for the administration of Family and Medical Leave Act benefits for city employees for a period of one year, with three one-year options to renew exercisable by the Director of Human Resources. Ordinance 770-2022 by Councilmembers McCormack and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the purchase by rental... I'm sorry. Authorizing the purchase or rental by one or more requirement contracts of the purchase or rental of new heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems, and the necessary items of labor, equipment, and materials necessary to maintain, repair, test, inspect, or enhance existing systems for the Division of Airports, Department of Port Control, for a term of two years, with two one-year options to renew, the first of which shall require additional legislative authority. Ordinance 771-2022 by Councilmembers Casey and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the purchase by one or more requirement contracts of diesel fuel and propane gas for backup generators, including delivery for the various divisions of Department of Public Utilities for a period of two years. Ordinance 772-2022 by Councilmembers House, Hairston, and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Economic Development to enter into a tax increment financing agreement with 3614 Euclid Avenue, Euclid Holding LLC, or its designee, to support the financial and development... the financing and development of the Delta Hotel Project, to be located at 3614 Euclid Avenue, to provide for payments to the Cleveland Metropolitan School District, and to declare certain improvements to real property to be a public purpose. Ordinance 818-2022 by Councilmembers House, Hairston, and Griffin by departmental request, approving the addition of property located at 5,000 Euclid Avenue to the Northeast Ohio Advanced Energy District, accepting and approving a petition and plan from property owner in the district identifying a special energy improvement project, declaring it necessary to conduct the special energy improvement project, providing for the assessment of the cost of such special energy improvement project, authorizing the Director of Economic Development to enter into an energy project cooperative agreement, and a special assessment agreement to implement the project, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 819-2022 by Councilmember Griffin, Designating Certain Property Located on Hulda Avenue between East 110th Street and Woodhill Avenue in the Woodland Hills neighborhood as Ernest G. Turner Memorial Pocket Park. Ordinance 820-2022 by Councilmembers Bishop and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Public Works to enter... to accept a grant from Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council for the NOPEC Energize Community Grant Program for various energy efficiency and city facility improvement projects, determining the method of making the public improvement of implementing the projects, authorizing the Director to enter into one or more contracts for the making of the public improvement, and authorizing one or more standard requirement professional services or other contracts or agreements needed to implement the ordinance.
Okay. First reading, emergency ordinances to be passed.
Ordinance 774-2022 by Councilmember Griffin, to amend Section 4 of Ordinance 194-2021 as amended relating to compensation for various classifications. Ordinance 775-2022 by Councilmember Griffin by departmental request, to amend Section 48 of Ordinance 194-2021 relating to compensation for various classifications. Ordinance 776-2022 by Councilmembers Jones, Bishop, McCormack, Starr, Griffin, House, Polensic, Conwell, Hairston, Mooney, Moore, Harsh, Santana, Spencer, Casey, and Slyth, authorizing the Director of Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement with the Hispanic Police Officers Association for the Puerto Rican Expo through the use of Wards 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17 Casino Revenue Funds. Ordinance 777-2022 by Councilmember Conwell, amending the title in Section 1 of Ordinance 678-2022 as it pertains to authorizing the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement with Midtown Cleveland for the Pow Wow Educational Expo through the use of Wards 2, 4, 5, 7, 8, 9, 11, and 17 Casino Revenue Funds. Ordinance 821-2022 by Councilmember Griffin by departmental request, approving the collective bargaining agreement with Cleveland Patrolmen's Association, non-civilian, and to amend Section 55 of Ordinance 194-2021 as amended relating to compensation for various classifications. Ordinance 826-2022 by Councilmembers Conwell, Polensic, and Hairston to add the name Principal Jacqueline Bell Way as a secondary and honorary name to St. Clair Avenue between East 110th Street and East 113th Street.
Okay. Read the motion to suspend the rules.
By Councilmember Santana, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember Starr.
Call the roll.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Casey, Moore, McCormack, Mooney, Polensic, Santana, Slyth, Spencer, Starr. Sixteen yays.
Thank you. Call the roll on passage.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Casey, Moore, McCormack, Mooney, Polensic, Santana, Slyth, Spencer, Starr. Sixteen yays.
All right. First reading, ordinance referred for administrative review and committee review.
Ordinance 773-2022 by Councilmember Conwell, changing the use, area, and height districts of parcels of land northeast of Ansel Road between Derby Avenue and Superior Avenue, and adding a 15-foot specific mapped setback from the property line.
First reading, emergency resolution referred for administrative... I'm sorry. First reading, emergency resolutions adopted.
Resolution se...
Oh, sorry. First reading, emergency resolutions referred for administrative review and committee review.
Resolution 778-2022 by Councilmember Griffin, urging the Ohio General Assembly to pass Senate Bill 341, which would modify the Ohio Motion Picture Tax Credit and would authorize a tax credit for capital improvement projects related to film and theater industries, thereby creating jobs and robust economic growth.
All right. Now we're at first reading, emergency resolutions to be adopted.
Resolution 779-2022 by Councilmember Santana, objecting to the renewal of a D5 liquor permit at 3129 West 25th Street, first floor and basement. Resolution 780-2022 by Councilmember Bishop, objec... excuse me, objecting to the renewal of a C1, C2 liquor permit at 3916 East 123rd Street, first floor only. Resolution 781-2022 by Councilmember Starr, objecting to the transfer of location of a C1, C2 liquor permit to 3609 Community College. Resolution 782-2022 by Councilmember Casey, objecting to the transfer of ownership of a D2, D2X, D3, D6 liquor permit to 3670 West 130th Street, first floor only. Resolution 783-2022 by Councilmember Moore, objecting to the transfer of ownership of a D5 liquor permit to 5612 Harvard Avenue, first floor and basement. Resolution 784-2022 by Councilmember Casey, withdrawing objection to the transfer of location of a C2, C2X liquor permit at 12945 Lorain Avenue, and repealing Resolution 24-2022, objecting to said transfer. Resolution 785-2022 by Councilmember Moore, withdrawing objection to the transfer of ownership of a D2, D2X, D3, and D3A liquor permit to 2317 Dennison Avenue, first floor... first floor, front, basement, and patio, and repealing Resolution 935-2021, objecting to said permit. Resolution 786-2022 by Councilmember House, withdrawing objection to the renewal of a C2, C2X liquor permit to... at 5300 Superior Avenue, and repealing Resolution 963-19, objecting to said renewal. Resolution 822-2022 by Councilmember Harsh, objecting to the transfer of liquor license of a D2, D2X, D2X liquor permit to 4317 State Road. Resolution 823-2022 by Councilmember Polensic, objecting to the renewal of a D1, D2 liquor permit at 12307 St. Clair Avenue. Resolution 824-2022 by Councilmember Polensic, objecting to the renewal of a D1, D3, D3A liquor permit at 770 East 185th Street, first floor. Resolution 825-2022 by Councilmember Harsh, objecting to the renewal of a D5 liquor permit to 4555 State Road, first floor and basement.
Read the motion to suspend the rules.
By Councilmember Santana, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember Starr.
Call the roll.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Casey, Moore, McCormack, Mooney, Polensic, Santana, Slyth, Spencer, Starr. Seventeen yays.
Call the roll on adoption.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Casey, Moore, McCormack, Mooney, Polensic, Santana, Slyth, Spencer, Starr. Seventeen yays.
Thank you. Second reading, emergency ordinances to be passed.
Ordinance 397-2022 by Councilmembers Starr, Hairston, and Griffin by departmental request, approving the addition of property located at 2275 East 55th Street to the Northeast Ohio Advanced Energy District, accepting and approving a petition and plan from a property owner in the district identifying a special energy improvement project, declaring it necessary to conduct the special energy improvement project, providing for the assessment of the cost of such special energy improvement project, authorizing the Director of Economic Development to enter into an energy project cooperative agreement, and a special assessment agreement to implement the project, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 455-2022 by Councilmembers Bishop, Santana, and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Directors of Public Works and Finance to enter into one or more contracts with Cleveland Metropolitan School District to conduct recreational, cultural, and extracurricular programs for the benefit of schoolchildren during the 21... the 2021-22 school year. Ordinance 484-2022 as amended by Councilmembers Hairston, Moore, McCormack, Mooney, Spencer, House, Griffin, Gray, Santana, and Mayor Bibb, to supplement the codified ordinances of Cleveland, Ohio by enacting new Section 375.13 related to tenants' rights to assert tender of rent as a defense to eviction. Ordinance 572-2022 by Councilmembers Casey and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Public Utilities to enter into one or more agreements with CHN Housing Partners to administer energy, water, and sewer conservation services to low-income homeowners for the divisions of Water, Water Pollution Control, and Cleveland Public Power, Department of Public Utilities, for a period up to one year, with one option to renew for a period up to one year, exercisable by the Director of Public Utilities. Ordinance 573-2022 by Councilmembers Casey and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Public Utilities to enter into one or more requirement contracts without competitive bidding with Business Inc., the Northeast Ohio Regional Representative of various proprietary equipment and services, in order to maintain and replace existing components of various chemical feed and related systems for the Division of Water, Department of Public Utilities, for a term of two years. Ordinance 575-2022 as amended by Councilmembers Casey and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Public Utilities to exercise the first option to renew a contract with Itron Inc. to provide automated meter reading, maintenance, and services for the Department of Public Utilities. Ordinance 576-2022 by Councilmembers Casey and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Public Utilities to exercise the first option to renew a contract with One Call Concepts Locating Services for locating and marking underground utility infrastructure and related activities for the Department of Public Utilities. Ordinance 577-2022 as amended by Councilmembers Casey and Griffin by departmental request, determining the method of making the public improvement of installing electric vehicle charging stations at approximately nine locations, and making associated modifications and improvements at various Department of Public Utilities facilities, and authorizing the Director of Public Utilities to enter into one or more public improvement contracts for the making of the improvement. Ordinance 578-2022 by Councilmembers Casey, Bishop, and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the procurement by one or more requirement contracts for the rental of various types of heavy-duty equipment for the divisions of Water, Cleveland Public Power, and Water Pollution Control, Department of Public Utilities, and for the Department of Public Works for a period of two years. Ordinance 579-2022 as amended by Councilmembers Casey and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Public Works to enter into a tax increment financing agreement Ordinance 579-2022 as amended by councilmembers Casey and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the purchase by one or more requirement contracts of various types of machines and equipment and labor, materials, and parts needed to repair and/or replace machines and equipment for the Division of Water, Cleveland Public Power, and Water Pollution Control, Department of Public Utilities for a period of two years. Ordinance 580-2022 by councilmembers Casey and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the purchase by one or more requirement contracts of labor and materials necessary to test, inspect, maintain, and repair bucket and derrick trucks for the Division of Cleveland Public Power, Department of Public Utilities for a period of two years. Ordinance 610-2022 as amended by councilmembers Casey and Griffin by departmental request, determining the method of making the public improvement of renewing, repairing, and replacing various water mains in 2023 and 2024, authorizing the Director of Public Utilities to enter into one or more public improvement contracts for the making of the improvement and authorizing the Director to apply for and accept one or more gifts, grants, loans, and other funding from public or private entities to implement this ordinance. Ordinance 611-2022 by councilmembers Casey, Polensic, and Griffin by departmental request, determining the method of making the public improvement of constructing improvements to the Nottingham Water Treatment Plant's intake crib, authorizing the Director of Public Utilities to enter into one or more public improvement contracts for the making of the improvement and applying for and accepting gifts, grants, loans, or other funding from public or private entities to implement this ordinance. Ordinance 662-2022 by councilmembers Bishop, Polensic, and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Directors of Public Works and Public Safety to enter into one or more contracts with the American National Red Cross for an emergency shelter relief plan using the city's neighborhood resource and recreation centers and other suitable, suitable city facilities for a period not to exceed two years. Ordinance 663-2022 by councilmembers Hairston, Starr, and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Economic Development to enter into an amendment to a contract with Economic Community Development Institute relating to providing Kiva loan servicing options and other related services, and other related services extend the term of the contract until March 31, 2023. Ordinance 664-2022 as amended by Councilmember Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Finance to apply for and accept a grant from United States Department of Justice for Community-Based Violence Intervention and Prevention Initiative, Cleveland Project Thrive Program, and authorizing the Director to enter into one or more contracts with Cleveland Foundation, Case Western Reserve University, the Evolier Group, and other entities to implement the grant. Ordinance 665-2022 by councilmembers McCormack and Griffin by departmental request, determining the method of making the public improvement of both designing and constructing updates to an expansion of the inline baggage handling system at Cleveland Hopkins International Airport, authorizing the Director of Port Control to enter into one or more contracts with Avair Pro's Services for that purpose and authorizing the purchase of materials, equipment, supplies, and services to implement the improvement. Ordinance 667-2022 by councilmembers Casey and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Public Utilities to enter into one or more requirement contracts without competitive bidding with Kron Liebling Company for the purchase of proprietary parts and services to install, maintain, repair, and replace Gorman Rupp Pump Equipment for the Division of Water Pollution Control, Department of Public Utilities for a period of two years. Ordinance 669-2022 by councilmembers Bishop and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the purchase by one or more requirement contracts of various types of general maintenance, structural repair, and lubrication requirements of movable bridges, including parts, equipment, and labor if necessary for the Division of Streets, Department of Public Works for a period of one year with two one-year options to renew exercisable by the Director of Public Works. Ordinance 670-2022 by councilmembers Bishop and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the purchase by one or more requirement contracts of recycled or virgin asphalt concrete for the Division of Streets, Department of Public Works for a term of one or two years. Ordinance 671-2022 by councilmembers Bishop and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the purchase by one or more contracts of commercial theatrical curtains and required hardware for the music hall located in the Cleveland Public Auditorium and to, and labor to install the hardware for the Department of Public Works. Ordinance 694-2021 as amended by councilmembers, by councilmembers Polensic, Jones, and Griffin to supplement the codified ordinances of Cleveland, Ohio by enacting new Section 13513 related to disclosure of police use of deadly force recordings.
Read the motion to suspend the rules.
By Councilmember Santana, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember Starr.
Before I move to call to roll, Councilman Mike Polensic on that topic.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my honorable colleagues, Madam Clerk, Mr. Mayor, members of the Administration, and public units, I want to just rise to thank you, Council President Griffin and the Mayor, my colleagues, for supporting Ordinance Number 694-2021. This is the legislation, whereas use of deadly force will now be available to the public within seven days. Mr. Chairman, I've long advocated the use of body cams many, many years ago. It took some time for us to get those body cams, but I always believed that the data collected was under the domain of the public. The cameras were paid for by the public, the data collection retrieval system was paid for by the public, and I believe the public had access to whatever was captured on those cameras. But it's become very clear to me that they've been a, they've been an insurance policy for our men and women in blue within the Division of Police, and they've also been an insurance policy for our citizens because the cameras don't lie. And what's also very clear, since the implementation of the body cams, complaints against the Division of Police officers have steadily declined. So the proof is in the pudding. And again, I want to thank my colleagues, I want to thank you again, Mr. President, for your support for this, I want to support the Administration, help, thank the Administration for, for looking for the piece, and we, we found it. And, and today is almost a year since it was first read into this body, but again, it was well worth the wait, well worth the time, and again, I want to thank my colleagues for supporting this, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, for a very good piece, and I do want to say that when I had a conversation with the Mayor and the Administration, they unequivocally agreed to support it, so appreciate that and thank you, another great initiative that we were able to get done today, thank you. Madam Clerk, call to roll.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Casey, Moore, McCormack, Mooney, Polensic, Santana, Slyf, Spencer, Starr. 17 yeas.
Call to roll on adoption.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Casey, Moore, McCormack, Mooney, Polensic, Santana, Slyf, Spencer, Starr. 17 yeas.
Okay, that's why I'm glad you were looking into that, thank you. All right, second reading ordinances to be passed, thank you.
Ordinance 672-2022 by Councilmember Casey, changing the use, area, and height districts of parcels of land south of Lakewood Heights Boulevard to north of Berwin Avenue between the former Lake Shore and Eastern Michigan Railroad to east of West 133rd Street. Ordinance 674-2022 by Councilmember Griffin, changing the area and height districts of parcels of land south of Murray Hill Road, east of Adelbert Road, to west of Ari Road, and adding an eight-foot specific mapped setback from the property line fronting Murray Hill Road.
Read the motion to suspend the rules.
By Councilmember Santana, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember Starr.
Call to roll.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Casey, Moore, McCormack, Mooney, Polensic, Santana, Slyf, Spencer, Starr. 17 yeas.
All right, thank you, call to roll on passage.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Casey, Moore, McCormack, Mooney, Polensic, Santana, Slyf, Spencer, Starr. 17 yeas.
Okay, intro, are there any introductions, any introductions? Uh, I'll start off with one and also want to commend, we have a new addition to our council team and council staff, I'd like for him to stand up, Darryl Torbit, Darryl Torbit, if he could stand up, please. Darryl also just got his master's degree this weekend from Bowling Green University, so, you know, congratulations and welcome. Are there any other introductions? Seeing no other introductions, are there any announcements? Councilwoman Santana.
So I know everybody wants to get out of here, I know we have a headache, but I just did not want this day to go by without thanking my colleagues for supporting the Puerto Rican Parade. Just this week, I've just been emotional and just elated, I mean, as I was in that parade and I see all the council members and I know it was hot, you know, and you guys were just kind of sticking through it, and, and, you know, I saw the mayor and I saw the Administration, everywhere I looked, there was representation from the city, and I just really want to thank you because we didn't see this, I mean, this many people at the parade, you know, representation from the city, so I want you to know that I got great feedback and there was, you know, people are paying attention, and so to see so much support from the city, I mean, we felt included and we felt appreciated, and so I just want to let you guys know that I really appreciate you attending this event, and I know we always have something to do on a Sunday, and it wasn't even about having fun, it was just that you were there supporting the Puerto Rican community, so thank you.
Thank you. Uh, are there any miscellaneous, or is it announcement?
It was, uh, yeah.
Announcement, Councilman McCormick.
Mr. President, I'm going to revert back if I may to introductions and welcome the Mayor of Tremont, Mr. James Lamb, who's with us.
Jimmy Lamb, Jimmy Lamb. Jimmy Lamb, all right, is there any miscellaneous, any miscellaneous? I do want to make one more introduction, I think we have a couple of more new directors, and I apologize because I have not gotten a chance to meet with you yet, but I think we have a new DPS director, if she could please stand for a moment, DPS director? DP, I'm sorry, not DPS, but sustainability, yes. What's your name again?
Sarah, can you direct your sustainability?
Okay, welcome aboard, thank you, and I know we've already broke her in and gotten her accompanied to Cleveland, but I want her to stand, and what's, what's your name again, tell your name?
Tessa.
Tessa Jackson, she's the Economic Development Director, so welcome the mayor's new additions to the table, thank you. All right, is there any other miscellaneous, any other miscellaneous? Seeing no other miscellaneous, Madam Clerk, please excuse the absences.
There are none.
There's what, there aren't any, okay, therefore, this council is adjourned to the call of the chair, the next meeting of council will be on Monday, September 12, 2022, this committee is adjourned.[1731.32]